To me and Borough. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Clerk Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that the elected officials training has been rescheduled for Thursday, April 11th at 6:00 PM. The Borough receives a $250 credit per council member in attendance, so please let me know if you cannot attend. With regards to elections, Tatiana and I attended the voting machine training, well, what we thought was the voting machine training on Friday at the county. It turned out to just be an informational session for them to tell us how we're going to go about training for the new machines for the elections for this year. They're going to be doing that in small groups because they want us to be hands-on and know the ins and outs of these machines as we're going to be the front line of defense for elections. So, we'll also be attending the board worker training classes to see where the board workers have issues and just to kind of give us another refresher, but we'll know, you know, they'll call us and let us know when we're going to training. The election this year, we have senators in the Assembly in New Jersey, two Board of Commissioners, the mayor and two council seats, as well as school board positions will be open. Petitions are now due 71 days before the primary election. They're due by 4:00 PM on March 27th. New, another new thing, affiliated voters must declare their party prior to receiving a vote-by-mail ballot if they decide to do that. Normally, what would happen is you would receive both the Democrat and Republican ballot. They're no longer required to do that, and that's going to save them a lot of money. But it's a law that says they don't have to do it, and so you'll have to declare if you're unaffiliated, and you'll just receive that ballot in the mail. The county is in need of board workers. I'll include the information in our Friday email blast and post on our website, which I think I already have it on our website, but you need to be a registered voter. It's $300 a day. We have a lot of people in Waldwick who come out and are board workers. We have great board workers here, but the county is in need, so if we don't, if we have enough here, they may put you in another municipality close by, so just keep that in mind. The early voting locations, there's going to change, and I will post that as soon as they give me the list. It will not be in Mawa anymore. They're moving that to Wyckoff. I have no other details. That's all they kind of told us, so, but I want to at least let people know that there's been a change. No more Mawa. April 12th is the deadline to change your political party affiliation. Information is on our website under elections, and I also have a link in the Friday community news. Tomorrow's the last day to register your pet or renew your pet license without a late fee. After that, it's a $10 per dog late fee, and we are doing, alarm registrations are ongoing, and tenant registrations as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Attorney Eric Lee for Borough. Attorney Craig Zahn.
Thank you, Mayor. Throwing the reports. Thank you.
We're going into closed session tonight, and there'll be any, no action. So, if you want to wait around, you could, but there'll be nothing being discussed. And then resolutions and resolutions of a governing body. We have resolved that the following resolutions here with listed by consent, having been considered by the governing body of the Borough of Waldwick, are hereby passed and approved. 2023-103, approval of consent. 2023-104, approval of minutes, special meeting February 7, 2023, and regular meeting February 14, 2023. Policy votes A. Waldick Education Foundation requests to hold a townwide garage sale on Saturday, April 22nd and Sunday, April 23rd, with a rain date of Saturday, April 29th and Sunday, April 30th, and a waiver of garage sale permit fees as outlined in their letter dated February 14, 2023. B, the Waldick Community Alliance requests to hold the annual car show event on Sunday, June 4th from 9:30 to 3:00 PM with a rain date of June 11th, as described in their letter of February 10, 2023. Policy vote C. Waldick Football Club requests to use Veterans Park Field from March 1st through July 31st for U-12 practices and games as shown in the January 19, 2023 email. 2023-105, approval of accident and sickness policy with VFIS in the amount of $4,552. 2023-106, authorizing the Bergen County mosquito control to perform services in the Borough of Waldwick. 2023-107, award a non-fair and open contract to Herr and Company for pool repairs in the amount of $39,000. 2023-108, award a non-fair and open contract to Brent Material Company for hydrants in the amount of $42,560. 2023-109, what are payment, what are overpayment 7-1 Tamaron account 3210-0. 2023-110, approval of appropriation transfers, and 2023-111, a payment of vouchers. Do I have a motion and a second to accept? Motion by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Schatz. Anyone on the question? Nope. If not, please take the roll.
Ms. Seracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Okay. We have two public hearings and adoption of ordinances with the clerk kindly read ordinance number 2023-02.
Ordinance number 2023, number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 29, alcoholic beverages, Section 29-12, hours of operation restricted, to clarify restricted hours seven days a week.
Anyone from the council would like to comment on this ordinance that was just read? What this is, is this was put out at our last meeting, and one of our residents came forward and told us that in the advertising, it was advertised wrong. So, what we did is we had to re-advertise it, and we're putting it out there now for the public. What this is saying is that the hours of restaurants to stay open would be 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And the police are, they think this is the right thing to do, and we're going by the authority of the police. Anyone else from the council would like to comment on this ordinance? If not, I close the comments of the council. I ask anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance that was just read. If seeing no one, I close the public's comments and ask for a motion and a second to pass this ordinance on second reading and that the clerk be authorized to advertise in a local legal newspapers as required by law. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Mr. Ritchie, second by somebody, second by Mr. Schalero. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Seracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
With the clerk kindly read ordinance number 2023-03.
Ordinance number 2023-03, an ordinance amending Chapter 91, vehicles and traffic, Section 16 metered parking, and Chapter 48 fees, Section 91-12.2 vehicles and traffic parking meter fees.
Anyone from the council would like to comment on this ordinance that was just read? Yes.
Um, I didn't see it in here, but are we having designated spots for residents only in, with some of these meters? I know we had discussed it, and part two of the question is, can we put these same meters by the highway and have them be resident parking only? I had brought that up a couple times. I don't know if it could be included in this ordinance or if it is.
Yeah, neither are included in this ordinance. Both of them have been discussed, and I think we're generally viewed favorably by the council. What we had talked about was, we know that New Jersey Transit is interested in changing the rates at their New Jersey Transit lot, and some of that will dictate how we set rates around it, because we want to make sure that our rates are probably, I, I think we would want to make sure that our rates are somewhat more advantageous than transit's if we're going to have residents only there. So, I'm kind of waiting to see what they do to decide how we're going to set rates. We, I filed open them as recently as last week. We're hoping to get a contract from them in the next few weeks, although we've been waiting for quite a while from that. We have our renewal coming, for the transit lot coming up in July, and so we have an incentive to get this done pretty quick. And then, you know, as we do that, the council could consider the spaces by Route 17. We could do that anytime if you want to set them at the same rate as near the train station. It's up for your consideration.
Okay. It doesn't even have to be, it could just be a few spots by the train station.
Yeah. Or, or we could do one side of the tracks or the other.
Yeah.
You know, we can also expand parking down by the train station. I know that we've been monitoring usage of those spots, and we're never at full capacity at the train station in the on-street metered spaces. So, it's not that our residents don't have an availability currently, but we have seen an increase in usage of both those on-street spaces and the transit lot, so I expect that time will come. I'm not sure, you know, where in the timeline we're going to be for max capacity in on-street parking and negotiation with New Jersey Transit for the new rates.
Okay. And if perhaps I could follow up with you?
Yeah.
To get on the agenda to put meters by the highway as well?
Yeah, yeah. The good thing with the new system that we moved to, which is Park Mobile, pay by phone, either on an app or by calling the Park Mobile directly, is that the only thing we have to install are signage, right?
Sign.
So, we're not looking at physical meters. It's really easy to expand and contract the system, so we can do that at any time.
Okay. So, I would follow up with you to get that on?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
What this ordinance is also saying is that we're not changing no rates or anything like that. All we're doing is, instead of you having a meter there and you putting money in the meter, what you're doing is you're going to do it on your phone. Everything's going to be done a little bit different. Yes?
Excuse me, Mr. Administrator. I thought that the parking spaces by the highway were lottery, a lottery type thing, and there were only specific people that got those, and they paid them that way.
Yeah. That, my understanding, and it was before I came here, but my understanding was that was the case, but those spaces that, that people put in their names for them, they were chosen at, at random. Those spaces are free of charge, and so at least, I'm not aware of, and I'm looking at the clerk to see if she was there. I'm not aware of any of those spaces turning over in the last four years, right?
No.
Because they're free. And so, you, you know, you do have that.
Yeah, I don't, again, that happened before me, but there's kind of older paperwork that shows the lottery, shows who has these free passes, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how that came about, but that's the way it is right now, and they can certainly change that if they wish to.
Hopefully, we could revisit it.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, they're empty most days, and other residents would like the opportunity.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? If not, I close the council's comments and open it up to the public. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance that was just read? Being none, I ask for a motion and a second to pass this ordinance on second reading and that the clerk be authorized to advertise it in local legal newspapers as required by law. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Mr. Ritchie, second by Ms. Seracola. Clerk, take the roll.
Ms. Seracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Okay. We have one introduction of ordinance with the clerk kindly read ordinance number 2023-05.
Ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance amending Chapter 48 fees, Section 64-4.1, parks, tennis tags and fees, adding Section 64-4.3, parks, veterans field, amending Section 10.4, a fee schedule for use of the second floor of the ambulance corps building, amending Chapter 64, parks, Section 4 permits for special events, and adding Section 64.4, parks, special events.
A motion and a second is in order to move and pass this ordinance on first reading and that it will be advertised in local legal newspapers as required by law, setting a public hearing two weeks from tonight's meeting at 7:30 PM or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Mr. Schalero, second by Mr. Schatz. On the question?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is kind of interesting. It's something we've talked about a couple of times in our, in our meetings throughout, throughout the earlier part of this year, and, and essentially, we looked at all of the borough's resources that get used by both individuals, organizations, corporations, and we, we saw that we were charging some fees for some facilities, not for others, but we also noticed in recent years, a number of requests coming from for-profit businesses to use borough facilities. So, throughout our discussion, basically, what we settled on was we would continue to not charge fees to Waldwick nonprofits. We would set a fee schedule for out-of-town residents and out-of-town nonprofits and, and for-profit corporations, and all for-profit corporations to use certain facilities. So, we kind of moved forward. We established certain fee ranges for the different facilities, and basically, this ordinance is a compilation of those discussions and the work we've done. So, it'd be a great opportunity for us to take a look and get some fees. So it'd be a great opportunity for us to take a look and get some feedback on some of the things we're proposing here, if you weren't here when we were talking about them during our previous meetings.
And also, just to keep in mind that Borough Park, still, the residents will be using Borough Park without any charge. Any non-residents would have to pay a fee to use the park. Anyone else? Yes?
Yes. I just have a question on Section 5. The wording says, "The security deposit shall not be charged to nonprofit organizations based in the Borough of Waldwick or for members of the Waldwick Fire Department or Waldwick Ambulance Corps." Does that mean individual members, or does that mean the membership in the whole? Because you're charging other residents to use the facility, but I think it should be for the member, the membership in a whole.
As it is now, it's individual members.
Why?
This was an existing part of the ordinance that's going unchanged, and previous mayor and councils had decided that it was appropriate for individual members of the Fire Department and Ambulance Corps to not be charged.
Okay.
Anyone else? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Saracola?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mr. Schalero?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
No.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Unfinished business. Anybody from the council have any unfinished business?
Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah. In looking over the consent resolution, I'm going to just revise my vote to abstaining on 105.
Okay. Anyone else? Some unfinished business. On May 14th, we're going to probably have a busy night. What we're having is, we're going to have the Boy Scout, the Eagle Scout, come in and talk to us about his Eagle Scout project that he's working on. Also, I invited the Police Department to come in to be recognized, a couple of members of the Police Department for a couple of incidences that we had in our borough that they went above and beyond. And also, we reached out to the Ambulance Corps for two of the events that they had, and they're going to get back to me and see if that date is good for them. They don't think it's a problem, but I, you know, we want to make sure that all the members that should be on it will be able to come here. And if they don't, if they cannot make it, we'll schedule another date. So we'll let everyone know.
Is that March 14th or May 14th?
I'm sorry, did I say May?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, March. March 14th. Any other unfinished business? Nope. New business? Anybody from the council have any new business?
Just a question for Patrick. The reassessment webinar, is that going to be reported for people to access?
I've asked for it to be recorded, but it hasn't been confirmed. I imagine it could be.
Okay.
But then the good thing is, even if you're not able to attend, maybe it's an hour-long webinar, you don't feel like even sitting through the whole thing, you can call the appraisal company directly and ask them your questions. It's part of what we pay them for. We understand that this is a process that may cause some anxiety for residents, and so we want them to have access to all the answers. But I'll follow up on that request for the report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, public's comments, anybody from the public would like to comment on anything, please come to the microphone, state the name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kara Centeno, 111 Longview Drive. Just bear with me for a minute. I just want to give a little bit of a history on why I'm here. Our Waldwick soccer team won the state championship, and something the town should be super proud of. And back when it happened, there was discussion about putting a sign out and putting something in the borough like a lot of other towns have. Now, nothing really happened with it, so I came to a meeting on September 27th, did the same thing, got up for the public comments, and I was told, okay, thank you, send an email to info@waldwickwhatever and send it there. I included a picture, and I have it here this evening, of what it could possibly look like. It's very small, it's not large and intrusive. I respectfully waited over five months for a response, heard nothing, came down to the Borough Hall, still heard nothing a week after that. I put a phone call into the mayor, I did get a call after that, and basically was told that you all saw it the day after, on September 28th, and there wasn't enough support for it. And so I said, okay, that's, you know, your prerogative, but I'd like to understand why. And I said I would be back tonight to understand what the situation was and why we have an issue with celebrating something that young men in this town, that most of them grew up in this town. Waldwick is known as a soccer town. We're spending millions of dollars on two turf fields promoting soccer. It's a positive thing. It's a community thing. You're at the game, and everybody's chanting Waldwick, Waldwick, and it's such a good feeling, and you would hope that the town would support you as well. I've seen it in many other towns. I've seen it in Paramus, I've seen it in Ramsey, I've seen it in Glen Rock. I've seen it, the picture I have is a small one from Mawa. It even matches the type of signs that we have where it says, "Welcome to Waldwick." And back when it happened or whatever, it didn't seem like it was an issue. It was more of a, what's the regulations type thing? So I would like to request that we do it and would like to understand the process then, because if it said it doesn't have support, is there something that we could petition or something like that? You know, I'm sure the Waldwick Soccer Association would appreciate the advertisement too as well. I mean, it's good for real estate. Wow, I love Waldwick. Look at them, they're state champions. Oh, my God, they have good programs. They have good rec programs. I want my kids to grow up here. Look at these beautiful turf that they play soccer on, and sports is a big deal. Academics is, of course, a big deal. But why not celebrate something? Why not celebrate a state championship that hasn't been done in 24 years? There's been two in history. I mean, I've lived here my whole entire life. I'm all about community. I've been the treasurer for the PSO. I've been in the booster club. I've worked snack stands. You name it. It's all about community. It's about lifting each other up. So I'm going to take a breath and just try and get a feel for what I'm supposed to do next, to try and move this along, if possible.
Somebody want to say anything right now?
Well, I guess for me, I didn't take it and lead on it. My issue was that there's a lot of successes in town to celebrate, and to me, it was difficult to single one out. Yes, state championship is unique, but there's a lot of other unique successes to celebrate townwide as well. And, you know, when I started thinking, well, let's celebrate them all, I found it difficult to kind of set criteria for what that would be, to celebrate this success, that success, this achievement, that achievement, and it was just difficult for me to single out one group over others.
I can appreciate that. Why not set a level of, okay, state champion and higher, something like that? There aren't even any other state champions in any of the other sports either. I mean, I know there's other things, and, I mean, it sounds like we do celebrate them just, I mean, Eagle Scouts, I am 1,000% for that. We let them put stuff in the town. You know, why are some things yes and some things no? So I appreciate your perspective.
Anyone else? I have your letter. And as you said, you did send it to us. You sent it to us on 28th. Clerk sent it out to everybody on the 28th also. There was no response about it. That's why something came forward. Now you're coming back to us, so we'll have to re, you know, look into it. I just got to ask you a couple of questions. These signs, where you want them in all the, you told us the four places you want them.
Well, do you know where the Welcome to Waldwick signs are? Right by coming in from Mittel Park, there's one.
Now, you want to put them on top of those signs?
Well, in the other towns that I've seen, they have them Welcome to that, and then they have it right there, and they have, you know, if you look at Hawthorns, they have that Welcome to Hawthorne, and then it says Home of Cavaleros, and then it has State Champions for something, all on the same poll. It's not even like it has to be another thing or intrusive or anything. Now, I mean, I did ask to be advised of what to do next. I would not have waited over five months. I was trying to be respectful, thinking something was happening.
I apologize for that. Whenever I get any messages like this, I always hand it over to the administrator. We got caught up with a lot of stuff. Am I making an excuse? But we did drop, we did drop the ball, and we're glad you're coming back to discuss this. The thing we have to do is we have to figure out if we're really interested in doing this. The council right now, you know, you're here, we're going to, we'll have to review it. We have to also look and see if we could put those signs on the polls you have, because those polls that are there now, those were signs donated by the PBA. So we would have to have the PBA know.
The families would donate these if necessary.
I'm sorry?
I said, the families of the soccer team would donate.
No, no, I'm not saying that. They gave us these signs for the town, so we have to let them know what we're doing is we're going to add stuff to your sign. I'm not saying, we're not even questioning.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying it has to be. I'm just saying it would be nice, you know, that could be a spot. I mean, I've seen them where it's there, and this one, you know, this one, the picture that you have, is single.
Right.
It can be single as well.
Right. What we have to do is, we have to just talk about this again as a council, and this time we'll keep you informed about what's going on, so you know what's going on, if there's any interest. I mean, right now, you heard from one person that, you know, has one way of looking at it, and no one else has said no. So I guess what we'll do is we'll discuss it as a group and see what happens.
Okay. I guess I would just suggest or ask, that's what I was also told in September.
I know that. And as I said, I apologize for not getting back to you, but this time, I will make sure that we get back to you. Patrick on my side.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand what the issue is, so we could address something and understand it here.
One of the issues is.
I know, and I appreciate him stepping up and being accountable.
And I think the rest of the council wants to maybe talk about it or think about it.
Do you want me to comment too? Yeah, so, okay, sorry. So, yeah, so, look, I think, I wasn't here in September, well, I was here, but I was sitting in the audience when everybody came up. I thought it was a tremendous achievement for the soccer team. I've even remarked that it's probably the only sporting event I've watched in the last 20 years. I logged in and watched it. I'm not really a big sports fan myself, but I agree with Councilman Schalero. I have a hard time understanding where's the line, and how do we, if we're going to celebrate athletics, how do we also celebrate academics? Because to me, that's incredibly important as well. So I think that if we're going to do this, we need to understand as a council, what's the line, and how do we also celebrate academics, and how do we learn to say no to people if others come up and ask for the same thing? Because we need a policy. Otherwise, we're going to, we're going to be playing favorites. And so I think that that's what we need to discuss, and I don't think we have the, we haven't had the opportunity to do that yet.
I think it's set precedent in several areas already, not necessarily in sign situations, but, you know, coming into town, there's a landscape sign for, I think you probably donate to landscaping, but that's okay. We put a landscaping sign there. There's also different flags that hang there. I mean, I remember a couple of years ago, there was a big to-do about the pride flag that hangs there. I mean, there's different precedents, and there's always going to be people that aren't happy, and there's people that are happy. And, you know, to not do it just to appease everybody that doesn't get something, I'm not sure that's, that's the right approach you want. But everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but I would just suggest, don't just throw it out, because it's too hard to figure out where to draw the line.
Would you object to having one sign in the park?
Where would it be?
Probably when you come into Waldwick or for Route 17 with fences.
Okay.
We have an American flag there, we have, we don't have any other stuff there. It's just a thought. I mean, the council is the one that makes the final decision on this.
Oh, no, I'm not demanding any type of, it must have five signs or this here, it has to be here. That's just a suggestion, because that's where those Waldwick signs were. If you're saying, you know, we could put one larger, one nicer, one there, you know, when you come out, show it enough to prospect.
You know, that might be a suggestion, but we have to just, you know, as a council, we'll have to talk about it. If you're asking for an answer tonight, I don't think you're going to get it.
No, I'm not asking for an answer.
But we will, we will discuss it.
I can tell no one's really that willing to give their views.
No, we will, no, we will discuss it, and I promise you, I will get back to you.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate your time.
You could hold me responsible for that.
Okay. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Al Golden, 34. Dante, please. You know, the Bergen Record really, for some reason, they never put what happens in Waldwick in a paper. A lot of people really don't know that, what's going on here. I think it's a good idea to put a sign somewhere, because people writing in, and, I mean, even[1622.83]